All right, I guess I will go ahead and begin the meeting. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. It was a general consensus of all the school boards to go ahead and open this to the public. So throughout tonight's meeting, the public is invited to observe, but there will be no public input, comments, suggestions, or questions during tonight's meeting. If you have any questions at the conclusion of the meeting, you're encouraged to discuss those questions with your respective board members and/or administration. So I guess to begin tonight, one thing that we've made a priority is from our very first meeting that we had, we really talked about communicating to the public and the different avenues and different routes that we could go for those people that don't necessarily read the newspaper, those that don't attend meetings. So one of the things that we did put together was our website. That website is run by the school districts, and again, it's not ran by this group whatsoever. So anyway, that was one of those ways to get accurate information out. That's something that we're constantly trying to find different ways or different avenues to reach other people that again, that don't necessarily read the newspaper, go to meetings, or in this case, read websites either or cruise through the internet. So again, we try to communicate as much as we possibly can. So the other thing is, is we look at this group of five schools that are here, each district has a different issue, different concern, different challenges that they're dealing with. But so far through discussions, one thing that has become very evident is that the common thing that we all share is that we want the best for kids and that we're looking at ways and different ways to provide kids with the best possible education out there, a comprehensive education at that. So that again, is something that we want to continue. Tonight, as things are opened up, we've had great discussion in here, we've had great dialogue, we don't want to see that cease. We want to continue to have that dialogue. Anybody in the crowd, do respect that, you know, sometimes as things come up, we might talk a little bit from the hip. Again, we're trying to brainstorm, get ideas out there. Please don't hold us to anything. And so any of the media people or those people in the crowd, again, do respect the fact that we are just trying to get a dialogue out there. We're trying to brainstorm, we're trying to come up with solutions that will be workable for the five school districts. And as we go through tonight, again, remember that first and foremost, the reason why we're here tonight is students, and it needs to stay on the student's mind, and it needs to stay about students. So with that said, I think that covers really the first agenda item. Agenda item number two, if you guys want to open up your packets to that. We discussed this at our last meeting, and then we also, all the respective boards did discuss it also in their open meetings, and that was the kind of a discussion then about a 912 versus a 712 facility. And anybody that would, has gotten information or feedback, please feel free to chime in on this. But again, as we look at the 912 positives, really, you know, you're sitting at five or six things that were noted. As you look at the 712 facility, there's a lot more positives that have been noted. I know individually, the feedback that I've gotten from a lot of people is that they're really supporting these 712 facility. I think in all of our districts, we're probably spoiled to a degree because a lot of places have one facility or two facilities. Parents are used to only having to attend one facility or two, and one thing that they're nervous about is the possibility of having, you know, an elementary student one place, a junior high student somewhere else, and then a high school student somewhere else as well. So that makes doctor's visits or dentist appointments and whatnot take a little bit longer. So and I guess, you know, probably the biggest pro to the 912 facility is that of cost because of course, you're not building as large, you're not involving as many students and those types of things. But however, when you get to the 712, the main thing there that you look at is when you look at studies, you look at research, the best performing schools are K-6 and 712 facilities. So again, with this thing being about kids, I think that's probably the most important element of this thing. The other side of it is all of our districts, some of our districts already are having difficulties fielding junior high activities. All of our districts in the very near future will have problems fielding activities, and so that's probably another further thing that supports 712. Most of our curriculum also supports 712 as well, and that's what we're used to. So I guess with that said, if I have any feedback or comments, concerns from anybody else?
That's probably one of the bigger things is the curriculum, isn't it? Because a lot of them just built from seven, very long into high school.
Right. If we want a 912 facility, one of the things that might, students might miss out on, for instance, is your elective areas. Because now with 712, the seventh, eighth grade students get experience, your FCS, your arts, your AGGs, your FCCLA, all those types of things, they get to experience at least bits and pieces of it. And so if you want a 912 facility, you know, it might be hard to find though that staff for that seventh and eighth grade group to support those types of programs at that age level. Especially in this area, I think it's very, very important that our kids, especially as we talk a lot about career education, we need to expose kids, students, to careers at an earlier age. In a 912 facility, that might be very difficult to do. As well as now your guidance counselors also have access to junior high students, and you'll have more support and services there as well.
So we talked about options if we just did a 912, what are our options with the junior high? Are they going to stay the way they are? Are we looking at two junior highs? I mean, that wouldn't have some decision varying in it too. You know, if they're going to leave them all where they're at, I would be totally against that because of numbers. But if you're talking about converting them all into two, you know, is there reasons not to do that and reasons to do it also? But, you know, can we eliminate one of those options and just look at the other one or try and get somewhere off this?
Converting them into two would create more transportation issues, I feel. Maybe more out on the road.
The possibility of having a kid in three different buildings is a bad idea. Well, you know, Norfolk, they do that. It could be four different buildings, but they're all in Norfolk.
Yeah.
They are.
And their families are very used to that.
Right. We're definitely not used to that. I think, you know, if you go, a K-8 facility is amongst all five, you know, you do run into the facility or the activities issues, being able to support those things. And I think all of us, the very, very near future are going to be in that scenario. Now you're putting kids on buses regardless.
Well, it's not just us that are reaching out for junior high activities because I'm getting calls from CED schools looking to reach out for, are you guys wanting co-op? And I said, well, we already have a co-op going there. Oh, we're hoping maybe you can co-op with us. So what I'm getting, you know, CrossFit, for instance, has already called me and asked if junior high sports, we're low in numbers, and we are looking to co-op with people. So that's already a reality with the junior high, we don't have a couple of areas together.
So if you do decide to have a couple of different places, how do you decide where to go?
Exactly.
That's the biggest issue.
Hey, no matter where you put it, somebody's going to drive further, a lot further.
Somebody's going to want to hear it, somebody's going to want to...
You know, is that kind of some neutral person that studied, he's been in two schools, that best fit all areas in the state of Nebraska, if that's what you decided to do.
Another thing we look at, or I look at, or I mentioned, you could have a seventh grade team and an eighth grade team, and have an opportunity for more kids to play.
Right. But with two junior highs, you could have four teams.
Right. You know, and I think Shane, you know, you commented right there about you're getting calls from other people, and we've gotten calls from people from the southwest side. This isn't, you know, as we're having these discussions, this isn't just something that these five schools are doing. This is the pressure that all of rural Nebraska is feeling. You know, as we have this meeting tonight, you know, there's other meetings that are taking place throughout the weeks in other locations and other areas in the state of Nebraska because all of rural Nebraska is declining, and everybody's having those difficult discussions. Any other discussion?
One thing on the cost too, on the 912, you might think that's a pro right now, but if you don't bring them in, and you end up adding on to your school later on because your numbers didn't drop, and you still want to bring them on, well, your cost might actually be higher down the road to add on to that facility to bring your junior high in later.
I think I know what building costs there are not declining.
The one, the theory also was, if you do 712, and our numbers do decline, we at least will have corporate facilities, maybe to bring some of the lower rates.
Should we move into subcommittee reports? Begin with investigative.
The investigative committee met Monday, this is Monday night, a month ago, and we started off by talking about possibly joining a survey, and we were also going to contact NASB for a list of schools that have potential, or that have consolidated, or maybe have failed consolidation in the last 10 years or so. We're looking for that list of schools, and when we found out that, if we, when we do get that list, we'd like to go maybe with some of them to see if they have any thoughts and ideas.
You know, I possibly could help you on that, through the legal.
And then we started kind of coming up with that list of questions that we would potentially ask those students at that time too. Kind of the highlight of that meeting. Jenny, am I listening to anything, or anybody else having?
I don't know if you guys want to know the questions that we kind of came up with for maybe what we put on the survey or talked to the other schools about is what curricular advantages were realized by you consolidating? How as a school did you guys handle the transportation issues that were brought up? And who made those decisions? Did you hire a consultant to help you merge? And if so, who? What grade structure did you set up? Kind of like what we were talking about, seven through 12, nine through 12. Knowing what you know now, what would you do differently? Kind of like we discussed, to build a house, two years after you build a house, there's probably something you would do differently. Is there anything you would do differently since you've merged? And then I had mentioned, how did you come up with merging maybe two schools or three schools? A lot of the mergers are two schools. Did you decide, you know, would you merge more than the two now versus when you did merge just the two? What are the current enrollments? And how do you keep it a sustainable school system? And did you have a lot of students option out and option in once you did merge?
I don't know who I mentioned this to, but you should contact the Law Concord, which they use a professional agency for surveys and for that purpose to help in the reorganization process. And the superintendent, that would be a good contact, although his name escapes me.
Randy Glitz.
Randy is. But he's mentioned that to me several times. If you need information, you can provide a lot for, from the process that they use or the firm.
Okay.
Law Concord and Co.
Turn it over to legal.
Okay, on legal, one of the four superintendents discussed, we threw out several names, and a couple came to the top, Greg Schultz of Perry Law Firm, Brett Schultz of the Perry Law Firm, was the one that I contacted, and he was very interested and willing to be the legal representation, or the person to spearhead legal representation when needed for this process. He also mentioned that he has done numerous, call it what you want, consolidations, mergers, and he said he has a PowerPoint that he would like to show. I suggested, maybe with the blessing of the group, that this could be done on the November 12th meeting. He said he could come up and present that, since it's a going to be a larger crowd. And he's done this a lot, and so he has a lot of experience in that, and a good resource to contact for that. So that's where we're at on the legal part of it. There are other lawyers that we can utilize, and they all specialize in different things, but I think he does a great job on this aspect. So that's what I think. I don't have everyone's email on the list, I couldn't contact, I haven't listed, but I couldn't contact one person, I think. If you're on legal, do you want to leave your email for me tonight if you haven't got one, or if you haven't, then leave it, though I can contact you. That'd be all I have.
Anybody else on legal? Go ahead and turn it over to architecture then.
Okay, as far as the architecture committee, we haven't met yet, I'm going to have a couple of things to offer. I am going to hand some committee members, remember at the last meeting, I had you update what committees are on, phone numbers, that type of thing. I took that information, all those scores, and updated it, so I'll pass this around so you have a, still, everybody's still not on there, but at least it gives you a little better idea of who the members of each committee are, and either a telephone number, email address, whatever you decide you want to contact. Okay, as far as the architecture committee, and I said we haven't met yet, but at administrator days, they usually have a number of vendors out there where you can meet with different people. They usually have three, four, five architectural firms that are there. So I kind of made my way around and visited informally with each of the representatives there. Probably the biggest things I gathered from that, other than making contacts with them and letting them know that, you know, down the road, we might be interested in speaking with them, is a lot of them indicated that, you know, right now, they weren't in any real big hurry with the architecture part of it, which I was a little surprised at, but they just, you know, said, I don't think you're ready maybe for that point. I visited quite in length with one firm about different things, and not, you know, just about a lot of general things, which were very informative for me, and I think we get our committee together and can share some of those things with you that way. I have tentatively said that anybody on the architecture committee would be welcome to attend. I had an architecture firm email me the other day, it's one of my business without Carney, on September 12th at 10 o'clock, in my office in Plainview, if you're interested, you're on that committee and interested, you're welcome to sit in on that. And I think what they want to do is just come out and talk. They've actually stopped before, you know, when they're in the neighborhood, and they talk a little bit about, see if there's any needs you may have. With, you know, with our discussion so far, I'm sure that, you know, that's prompting us a little bit, but you are, anybody in that architecture committee is welcome to attend, sit in on that. And if you just make sure that, you know, if your name isn't on that list, or I don't have a contact, if you could get to me before the night's over, so I, in case something would change with that, that I could let you know on that.
Talking about the meeting, we had subsequent this involving program instruction, especially the meeting we had with the summer, with teaching staffs from the five school districts, as well as representing somebody's community college, and members of the career education department, the craft department of education. During that, we discussed amounts of AP and dual credit courses that possibly could be provided, which, and the ability to fill those courses, therefore making those courses and those offerings more competitive. We talked about, yeah, curriculum, college degree programs, programs in the health field, industrial technology, shop programs, ag programs, FCS, so it's natural sciences, and then, and now we have the ability of a school with full staffs in those areas to provide a link to local area businesses, to establish potentially apprenticeships or career development tailored to local businesses, to help provide them a local job rated workforce. Future recommendations that we look at, first of all, we need to meet as a subcommittee and go over that data presented to us, NDE as well as from the teacher meetings over the summer, so also from this community college. Once that's done, start developing a draft or possible outline of a curriculum for grade seven as well. Once that draft of curriculum is completed, go back to that original teacher group that met over the summer as well, through some community college, and those members of the career department of NDE that met, so we can, they can provide further input, tailor, make changes, additions to that draft or outline. And once the teachers and that group from NDE and other community colleges provide input, go back to the committee, the full committee here for final discussion before ultimately accreditation.
That's basically it. We really wanted to emphasize the fact that curriculum expansion, to me, is important that not only will we offer just the basics, but we would have the opportunity to maybe even offer some other areas for kids to expand in all areas, and have teachers who are qualified to teach that, or even specializing in something that they're doing, say having one person teach 712 sorts of stuffies, you know, and actually work in a department in collaboration, others, which is a prudent model and best practice, so.
You know, I think when you start looking at the curriculum, your eyes get pretty big with what you could possibly do with some pooled resources and that. I think, I know Cory, you're going to talk about career education here a little bit right now, but you really start getting into the hands-on education, and being able to do a lot of things that by ourselves right now, we can't do, and we can't really fathom or think about. So I guess turn it over to you Cory.
Sure. Well, for those of you that weren't at the last meeting, Cory Efler, I'm the deputy state director for career education. And really, we appreciate the opportunity to continue supporting the conversations here. And we continue to be excited about the fact that the conversations are grounded in what's best for students, and that's the message that we carry home, that I carry back to the department of ed, and they're like, what's going on up there? And I said, it's about what's best for students, and so we appreciate that. I did bring, and for those of you that were here last time, some of this information might be a little bit of a carryover, but as you start thinking specifically about the curriculum and career education, I don't think I brought this last time, but I do want to pass around our overview, our career overview booklet, because I want to point out specifically a couple of things. If you look on page six as this document comes around, some of you are familiar with our career education model, and the way that we're organized in Nebraska for career education are around what we call six career fields, which if you look in the middle, are the yellow, the green, purple, orange, red, and blue. And so as schools are making decisions about career education programs, we typically start with a career field. So for example, ag food natural resources is a career field where we have courses developed that lend itself within that particular area. So at that broad career field, we branch out into 16 career clusters, which are the smaller little bubbles within each of the colored specific areas, and then below those are pathways. So at the broadest level, a school could offer a career field set of courses, so very broad basics, so think ag food natural resources, as there becomes an opportunity to specialize into more of a career cluster. So getting, taking it from this 30,000 foot level to now 15,000 foot level. And then as resources and people and students are available, even taking it a step further to a pathway level, to where it becomes this very specialized program in terms of what a student is interested in. So if I'm interested in health sciences, maybe I get specifically into CNA programs. So it's not just this broad level, it gets to this very specific sequence of courses within a very specific career pathway. The great thing is, is when we're connected with the community college, there's this real, there's a strong transition from secondary education into post-secondary education. Opportunities for students to earn dual credit. And so really thinking specifically about this scaffolded set of knowledge that a student would have in a given area. So I shared this mainly because this is how we're organized, but I brought this last time, but I'll bring it again, and maybe that career ed model will make sense. So the other piece of the conversation that keeps coming out is, how do we, how are our schools and our school districts connected with businesses and employers? And if you continue to hear the news and a lot of the conversation at the federal level in relationship to education, is that education is the pipeline to economic growth and development. So as we think about our local communities or our regions, we are challenging schools to really think specifically about how they feed this pipeline of workers. So we often hear from employers that say, we don't have enough workers in X field, I'll say manufacturing. And so if the schools aren't offering programs in those areas where there are jobs, we see that as a disconnect. So we want to engage employers in this process. So this report is from our H3 website, High Skill, High Demand, High Wage, it's h3.ene.gov. I shared that last time. But what this has done, is this is real-time labor market data that showcases the projections to 2020 of jobs in the northeast region. And I sorted them by career cluster, so they match what's on page six. So if you look at the career cluster in the northeast region, ag food natural resources is where most of the jobs are projected to be in 2020. And then you go down the line, business management administration, hospitality and tourism, manufacturing, health science, you can just go down the list and see where the jobs are. So what we're asking schools to consider is, they're looking at career education programming, is really taking a look at the projections and seeing if they're offering programs that are in line with this. So I'm not sure how many schools out of the five offer, let's say, for example, ag food natural resources. I'm not sure if it's all of them, or two or three, but what we're seeing from this report is that this is the area where the most jobs are going to be in 2020. So as we work with schools and they start thinking, what career education program should we be offering, we're hoping that they look at this labor market information and really making sure that career education reflects that data, because it's, it's the reality of how do we keep growing our communities? How do we grow this area? It's, I shared last time, I heard a principal in another part of the state, we were talking to him about where are the jobs in this community? Like what are the, who are the key employers? And this principal said, we have healthcare coming out of our ears. And we asked, well, what health science courses do you offer to your high school students to prepare them for these careers? And he said, we don't have any. So to us, that's a disconnect, because if there are healthcare jobs coming quote-unquote out of their ears, but they're not teaching students any of those skills at the secondary level, there's this huge disconnect. So what we're trying to work with schools in doing is really making sure that the programs reflect where the jobs are going to be. If you, one of the phrases we keep hearing a lot is the idea of there's a skills gap. So in the fact that Nebraska has a really relatively low unemployment rate, like, you know, under 3%, if you don't have the skills for the jobs that are available, you're not going to get a job. And so we keep talking to schools, let's make sure we're preparing students for jobs that exist, and equipping them with the skills and knowledge. The other thing too, like Jeff pointed out, is that we know that rural Nebraska, there's this quote-unquote "brain drain" where students leave our rural communities, they go east, and some of them come back, but some of them don't. But what we believe is that if we build these really strong programs that perhaps may continue to attract employers, that students may leave for their education, people come back, because there's hope, there's this relevance of what they're doing. Or in many instances, they can go to the community college, get a two-year degree, and go right to work in some of these programs, and never even leave the area. So we think that there's really a strong opportunity for schools to connect with local businesses. The other thing too, is we get into these career clusters, like looking at this, I brought last time, and I have a few copies, but this showcases the courses that we can, that are approved and on the books at the department of education, this is just an ag food natural resources. So students can get as in-depth as animal biology, biotechnology, agronomy, plant biology. So by having opportunities to offer more curriculum opportunities, they get to this true depth of knowledge. And then if there's a connection to northeast and that post-secondary piece, they may be able to just walk right into a program there with relatively no problems, there's no remediation that needs to be done, they've got this very seamless transition in path. So I mean, I think that's our message is, is how does education connect to the workforce? We have a ton of courses on the books that are able, that often bigger schools are able to get a lot deeper because of staff and students. So we see this as an opportunity perhaps for these schools to dig deeper and to think, what are these, what are the careers that we're preparing students for? But also bring employers to the table and ask them, what are the jobs that we need to be preparing students for? And making sure that it exists. And so we'll continue this, the conversation, once we start talking about revision, I can jump into that whenever we want, but it's an opportunity for the connection between employers and education. Question? Questions about that, and then I will talk about revision if that's what they're.
What's, if revision into just a matter of, it's on their agenda down the road?
Questions about. We talked about it too last time, the importance of career guidance and school counseling. So sometimes the mantra, if you build it, they will come, is not necessarily the case when it comes to getting students interested in these programs. So whatever programs end up, there needs to be a really strong component of career guidance and counseling. You think about some of these careers that students have no idea what it is. In the Omaha area, transportation distribution and logistics is huge. Think about I eighty running up and down the state. So there are programs, transportation logistics programs in high schools. But to get a high school student to enroll in that is kind of like, pretty tough, because they're like, I have no idea what logistics means. I don't even know what that means. But they get into these programs and they're like, holy smokes, I can go work at EPS, I can go to Warner. All of these FedEx is right there. So thinking about what is that system that's in place in terms of getting students interested in these career areas? And so, if it ends up being seven twelve, I think that also lends itself to a, a greater opportunity for a very systematic approach to career guidance. Very intentional, not just something that we hope happens, but it's very deliberate and explicit, so that's.
Cory, give me, Cory, give me a picture of that, the path that you take from the seventh grade through high school.
In terms of the career guidance or a course or a program of study?
Career guidance.
You know, like I mentioned last time, we're seeing, the research tells us that it should start in elementary school, fourth grade. But at that level, it's about career awareness. So getting students to, at that age, see this career wheel, these career fields and say, there are jobs in healthcare. There are, think about, I, I've heard the example the other day, in elementary school on job day, a lot of it is, some of our service industries, firefighters, teachers, bankers, et cetera. But then, how can we show students that there are careers in computer science at fourth grade? Letting them see what information technology looks like. They live on their, I saw a picture of kindergartners using QR codes the first day of school. So they're, they know what technology is, but let's show them what types of careers there are. So at an early age, it's career awareness, then it's exploration. So it's not just becoming aware, it's actually, let me explore all of these, let me experience that. And in some cases, a lot of schools, what they do at the middle school level is offer a course in seventh or eighth grade. It's a semester-long exploration of all of these career areas. And then, once a student says, you know what, I'm really interested in, let's say, health sciences. Then hopefully, once they get to the high school level, they're taking courses in that. So it's not just the exploration, it's the in-depth discovery of, wow, I'm, I'm taking courses. Thinking about what are the connection to workplace, am I in a hospital? Am I actually having an opportunity to explore what life is like as a registered nurse? Or having connections with an actual mentor? And then connecting them with the right post-secondary piece. So we talk about career awareness, career exploration, and then continuing to dive further into the actual subject and content area supplemented with workplace experiences. I think that's a big problem we face right now in society, is a lot of our students are not working, so they don't know what work is like. Hear that from a lot of employers, say, you will not believe some of the requests that come in from people right out of their four-year degree. They, they have these absurd, absurd realities of what work is like because they're not working. And I think it's a function of the economy, I think it's a function of that there are so many activities that they're involved in. So if a student wants to be a registered nurse, let's help them connect with an employer who may be able to allow them to experience what that is like. A lot of the career academy programs and early college programs, that's what the great thing about them are, is they, they're actually in there working, discovering if they like it or not. So I, that's kind of a, a long-winded answer, response to your question. I think it varies, but it's very, again, systematic career awareness, career exploration, connecting to the actual coursework that's available in that area. We use Nebraska Career Connections in terms of offering career assessments and inventories and then hoping our school counselors are able to actually have enough time to, because they're over, they're swamped. They have a lot on their plates, but they, they're definitely a great resource for connecting students with career information.
And I might, I might just add to the, the post-secondary piece, from a northeast perspective, we've aligned all of our programs in this, this wheel that you see here. So it's, it's really trying to create a seamless transition from high school to, to post-secondary education. For us, it's all about college and career, but certainly, many students are going to seek to find it right after high school. But I think most of us would agree that some college is going to be needed to be successful in today's economy and workforce. And so, that's where, if they start this in high school with one of those career pathways that Cory mentioned, then it's easy for us to illustrate, how does that fit into this career, career wheel as a, as a northeast community college program of study? Using graphic design, for example, you know, you may have some, a pathway in the high school related to art and some technology where they do digital manipulation of photography. And that could eventually be a career pathway that might then lead into a graphic design program of study to your college that they would then begin, begin depth work of all the intricacies of making this documentation like this. Very professional and ready for press, so to speak. And so, that's where the post-secondary piece comes in. We do work with high schools across the border, can we even, to create those pathways to offer opportunities for dual credit where it's appropriate. Work with teacher training, where we can help train high school teachers to teach some of the things that they're not comfortable with. Because many of them, this economy has, has created careers that many of them, as they've gone through their teacher education program, maybe are not aware of. And so, we try to help teachers be aware of what are some of these careers that are out here. As well as I think the expanded opportunities, when you add more numbers of students and a larger teacher resource, you can do, like Cory said, you can really drill down into making those career pathways more relevant to your local economies that you're, you're trying to feed a workforce to.
Cory, you made the comment about, you know, a lot of it then falls on the, the school counselors. And I'm pointing here because this is, sorry, school counselor, but wouldn't it be great to take the onus off the counselor? And make it a systemic process?
Absolutely.
In other words, have all of the teachers aware of the various pathways? And have a teacher responsible for a student from seventh grade through graduation, that same, by having a homeroom, maybe you start the first twenty minutes of the day or maybe in the middle of the, the day. But by having those conversations and having the same student for six years, then I become very aware of what their needs are, what their likes are, their dislikes are, and can better guide them towards an avenue that might.
Absolutely. And, and that's how, and we, Donna Hoffman is our school counseling specialist at the department. And we, we like to joke with her because we would say, well, just blame it on those counselors, you know, it's their fault. But that job is extremely difficult, especially with workload and caseload. And the sole responsibility for career guidance does not rest with the school counselor. It's teachers, it's counselors, it's administrators, it's parents, it's the community, it's employers, it's everybody. So that's why you think about this very systematic approach to career guidance. And I knew we had it in here and here it was, so this is kind of our recommended, starts on page fourteen with effective career guidance. Elementary level career awareness, middle school level career exploration, secondary career planning, and then moving into post-secondary with career application. And so, we continue to build resources and try to support schools as they think about a very deliberate approach to career guidance. Is it something that I start with a group and have them for six years and there's power in that? And our career education teachers need to continue to think about, how do we emphasize the careers in our area? But it's not just career ed, it's our core academic teachers too. You know, we talk about making classes relevant, so let's think about how do we continue to make math relevant for students that are interested in health or STEM careers? I think as career academies continue to grow, that's the power of the career academy program is that those core academic courses are contextualized. So all of a sudden, I'm learning math through the context of healthcare. I'm learning Omaha Bryant, obviously a much larger district, but they have an urban agriculture career academy. So those tenth graders are taking social studies, but it's taught through the context of Ag Food Natural Resources. So all of the things they're reading, all of the work that they're doing is Ag. They move over to English, so instead of reading whatever they might read in typical tenth grade English, they're reading agriculture pieces. Actually, one of the books that connected everything, they were reading The Hunger Games because they were talking about it from geography perspective, to Ag, to English Language Arts and engaging the students in that. And there's data that supports that that type of engagement, those type of experiences engages students, keeps them in school, keeps them out of trouble, helps them show up on time, they're less likely to be tardy, less likely to be discipline issues, et cetera. So again, a much different school district, but some different opportunities. So yes, it's, career guidance is everybody's responsibility.
Well Cory, I think one thing we haven't talked about yet is when we have the exploration part of this in high school, a kid gets down to an internship and decides that they are absolutely not going to like that path, they haven't spent any money, or very little if they've done dual credit. So now, they're not wasting mom and dad's or anybody else's money at a very expensive college. No offense.
It's true, I think, I think I said this last time, it's, you know, we, we joke about the four, the four-year being it's a place to find yourself, you know, like go to, go to a, you decide, I'm not sure what I want to do. I feel like I need to go to a four-year or wherever, and then you spend two years just kind of deciding what you want to do. That's a really expensive way to find yourself, we think. And so, that's where we're like, if we start students at this early age, and it's not locking them into anything, it's about opportunities. If, if I have an internship in a hospital, I'm like, I don't like blood. But then, I mean, and we've heard stories of that, so what are the other, they're like, I really like health. And we're like, think about information technology in a hospital. You can be, the health informatics is this booming career area. Think about all the databases associated with a hospital. Oh, I like healthcare, but I don't want to be a doctor, but I can do computer stuff in a hospital? Absolutely. So those, those workplace experiences are, are critical. And so, again, we just continue to think about, how do we provide more opportunities for students to experience these courses? And, and really help them drill down to the level that employers say is important too. And that's, that's a critical piece, it's the employer voice. And in some parts of the state, I just had a call this morning from someone asking me, well, you talk about this, employers stepping up and revisioning all of this, where, where's an example? And again, it's a different size of school district, but I said, Carney High School, they went through our revision process, they're moving to, they're building a new high school, it's going to be based around the six career fields, small learning communities, one point seventy-five million dollar donor stepped forward after that bond was passed because they said, you know what, we want to support STEM careers and we want to support information technology, here's nearly two million dollars to do that. Again, different community, I'm totally aware of that, but we keep hearing a lot of stories of employers stepping forward and saying, wow, you're doing this, let us help, let us just continue to help and support this work.
Something that kind of goes along with what you, you've been talking about, Administrator Day, I attended a session that was put on by, it deals with information technology. It was put on by a representative from Expansion, which is a computer business there in Carney, and I think Loop City, and I think there's a couple of other areas, but Nebraska places. Cabela's had a representative there, and they, I think there was a gal from the State Department, I think was there. And they talked about, what ties into what you were saying there, they talked about, I think it was eight different areas of involvement that students could get in in information technology. And their focus was trying to get students aware of what those are. You know, it, it would kind of tie into what you said with the, the health thing and finding out, well, like, information technology in the health field.
Right.
It's the same thing, a lot of their things that they talk about or they need, and they're, and they said, there's a demand for students in the area of information technology now. They said, everybody thinks that I have to be a programmer. And they said, yeah, that, that's important, but there are so many other jobs in information technology. It's just, if you can just find out what they are and maybe how it relates to your skills or your interests. So really the same thing, and that's looking at it a business perspective.
Absolutely. Yeah, that was the IT Industries Council, and they continue to talk about the need for workers in information technology, not just in Lincoln and Omaha. Think about, I think about how many of my, my friends and people I went to college with worked remotely. The reality is, is we, I tell my boss all the time, I don't need to be in the office, I can work from home. But jokingly, but if, we kind of live in this world where we can work virtually. So students could gain skills in information technology, work for a company in Omaha, but live in Creighton.
Anything else on curriculum? Okay, I'll turn it over to the Economic Committee, which is mine here. And so, I will read, just at this point, we have, really over the next six weeks, we will really, I guess, roll up our sleeves, begin making connections with businesses, and as we get a roundtable together, put together in Norfolk, many of us will go down there and have conversations with local businesses or area businesses. The other side of it too, is meeting with various economic groups within each of the communities as well as other chambers of congresses and, and really coming up to or figuring out what the concerns are, issues that they might have, and different ways to address those as this thing is, is continues to develop. So the purpose of the Five School Economic Committee is to explore the economic impact of a five-school consolidation and identify opportunities for stimulating growth in the communities of the five-school area. Part of that then is the Action Plan, which is the Five School Economic Committee will work with local economic groups to identify workforce training and community development needs and possible implications that may arise from a school merger. The Five School Economic Committee will explore opportunities for the school districts individually or as a merged district to strengthen relationships with higher education, provide students with an enhanced career education. The Five School Economic Committee will work with regional businesses to identify employer needs for a job-ready workforce. The Five School Economic Committee will explore opportunities for multiple career pathways designed to meet student and workforce needs in the region. These opportunities may include access to higher education and training for non-traditional students in the community, CERT. Basically, in a nutshell, what it is, creating that employment link, and like Cory said, creating that pipeline of, of workers. And therefore, you know, as opposed to maybe what we've done in the past, is making a connection as opposed to the disconnect. When you talk about disconnect, disconnect equals students leaving, which equals population loss. And, and that's what all the five of our communities are going through right now, is a disconnect which equals students leaving and then also a population loss, and that's what we're all experiencing. So really, this is, is a focus on bringing all of those individuals involved, all those multiple groups and facets together to grow our communities again, as opposed to constantly losing X amount of population every year. Anything on the economics? Okay, we will turn it over then to revision, and Cory, you kind of hit on that already a little bit here. All of our districts have applied for the revision grant, and we have been awarded that grant. So we will begin that revision process with our current curriculums that we have. We have agreed that we're going to, you know, do this together in a group setting. And so, anyway, we've been sent on your forms that are on your material. You can see several dates that have been listed as possibilities for Indy to come up here, whichever, whatever location it might be, and to be in the revision process, so. I think we've tended to leave, kind of looked at a couple of dates that might work better for the five schools up here, so. I guess Cory, you try to be the best one to explain.
Yeah, I can talk about revision too, and that was one thing, I, I hope we're able to kind of land on a couple of dates. That way, we can start to get our staff blocked off as well. So this is the third year of this process, and really, it's about a lot of what I talked about. Making sure that career education systems reflect Nebraska's economic initiatives. And we provide grants for schools that are interested, so five thousand dollars per school for the planning process. And you can see the participants over the last three years, notice that it's grown every year, which is exciting in, in terms of schools that are participating. And the back explains the, the five parts of this. The first part is really an assessment of what are we doing, what are our courses, what are our programs of study look like? What are we doing for career guidance at all levels? Part two is a meeting facilitated by our staff in terms of really kind of setting context for. Part two is a meeting facilitated by our staff in terms of really kind of setting context for the curriculum piece of it. Um and again, we showcase some of these uh economic projections, we look at labor market data, we look at or student interest data, uh NISA performance as well, and just really trying to get multiple data points to think about, what what should we be offering? Um once that meeting is done, there will be a community engagement meeting to where it's key employers, um key stakeholders in in the area to kind of report and and seek in for input. So again, bringing those employers in and saying, talk to us about where are the jobs, what's needed, what's necessary? Um once that's done, part four is another meeting facilitated by us. Um really diving deeper into career guidance and career development. And then part five is technical assistance. Um schools bring a team and uh this, since this is the third year, what we've found to be most successful is that it's a team of teachers. It's a team of building and district administrators, it's uh includes school counselors. Perhaps there's a school board member, perhaps there's a community member. But really, this is, we want teachers involved in this because a lot of times that's where, um you know, they're the ones that will feel this change if there's curriculum changes. We also have schools that bring core academic teachers as well. So math teachers, science teachers, social studies teachers, all hearing the same message, um and all getting on the same page. Um the, really, one of the things that's most exciting is it's not just the money for the process, but you can see on the front page in black, um we also have been able to offer action grants. Um so the first year, we had, uh we awarded two hundred and sixty thousand dollars um to the schools that are listed there. You see the big jump to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand that was awarded last year. We secured an additional three hundred and some thousand from the legislature, which was really exciting that that was a direct um support to career education from our state senators. They see the value in this and they said, we're going to support it. Um and the way that was broken out is each school was able to apply um for fifty thousand dollars, um but they could do that for three years. So a school could implement or could get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the course of three years if they were um, if their app- application was accepted. And really, what we're looking for there is connection to economic indicators and making sure that the changes are not just, well, let's buy new equipment. No, let's, let's offer new programs, let's uh create an uh uh work-based learning experience. Let's really ramp up career guidance and and career development programs. Um there's a range of size of schools, obviously, as you can see. Um one, like for example, Auburn at the top of the list, what they found in the revision process is that ag food natural resources was where the jobs were in that area. They didn't have an ag teacher. As a result of this process, they hired an ag teacher. Um they've got FFA going because of that uh process as well. And again, it was connected to employment data. Um it wasn't just, we want to have an ag program, we want to have an FFA chapter. It was them able to say, the jobs are in ag food natural resources, we have to prepare students for those jobs. Um so we've got a strong partnership with the community colleges in this process as well. We bring economic development to the table, um Department of Labor to the table. Um we see, this uh seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, I think it'll be similar for action grants this next year. I think we have a, the the additional funds for two years. Um but you also see that that list is going to get a lot bigger. So we anticipate that the grants will become much more competitive. Um so you can look at the schools that are in two thousand fourteen and fifteen, um but these schools from two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, and then fourteen will all be eligible for the same money. So it's really incentivizing schools to have that direct link to um jobs and and the employment trends. So I'm going to be the lead contact for this group, um so I'll, I'll be the one facilitating the the group meeting. Um if needed, facilitate the community engagement meeting, it's really whatever you want. Something that the schools need to think about, and each superintendent and principal will be thinking about, who's the revision team? Um it'd be nice if we could think about, where's the central location or where do we want to do this meeting at? Thinking about ahead to the community engagement meeting, do we have one community engagement meeting that could be quite large? But then everybody's hearing the same message once, it's this uh key group of employers. Those are things, I think, that you all will continue to have to kind of sort through and think about. Um but uh there should be a letter, I worked on it today, it was this close to being done. And my boss said, shouldn't you be getting on the road right about now? Yes, I'm, I want to finish this one thing. Um but there'll be a letter sent out to the contact um outlining some of the pre-work and then uh kind of the the next steps as far as revision too, so.
Like, Corey, I think that's really important, that we know. Um I don't know what the businesses are in Plainview or in Ogden or, you know, here in Creighton. And so I can tell you pretty much what's going on in Bloomingdale, but I can't tell you everything.
And we'll, we've invited the the regional economic developers and and hopefully the counties in terms of their economic developers will be a part of the conversation too. And that's the thing, like, they've been a a strong link for us in saying, hey, have you ever thought about this? But the other thing too, as we think about this, is we're, and I said this on the phone today to the gentleman I spoke with, is we're trying to get schools to think outside of their city limits. And sometimes that's hard. Um but I think about, I I grew up in a small town in Kansas and where I went to school wasn't where we bought groceries and wasn't where we got our oil changed and wasn't where we went to the movies. Those were all separate communities. So we're asking it from a regional perspective, so not just thinking about, well, what do we have within our local city limits? But do we branch out a little bit further? Because that's where the jobs are. I mean, are, where are people from these communities driving for work? Um that's something else to consider. It's not just what's happening in our town. That's important, that's very critically important. But as we look at it from this regional perspective, that's when we start to see a lot of of greater opportunities. So I think it makes.